At this time, I call the August meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight Reverend Michael Williams, the pastor of the White Rock Baptist Church on White Rock Road in Lincoln County to give us our invocation. Reverend Williams will come to the podium. At the conclusion of the invocation, we'll be led by the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag by Commissioner Collins.
Shall I stand and pray? Good Lord, we ask for your supernatural wisdom as some tough decisions may be made on tonight. We ask that the commissioners carefully consider all the relevant information and make decisions that are in the best interest of this community. We ask that they brainstorm and be innovative in solutions to problems that affect this community. We ask that they consider the pros and cons of each and every situation that they're asked to vote on tonight. We ask that they be unified in making their decisions and in the best interest, and they be unified as one despite differences of opinion that may occur from decisions made. We ask you to continue to bless this county, this city, this state, this nation, and we just continue to give you honor, glory, and praise, and again ask for your spirit and wisdom in these commissioners and the public tonight. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to take a moment to recognize two of our county commissioners. District One Commissioner Brian Henderson and District Four Commissioner Stan Tankersley have both completed their studies with the Carvinston Institute of Government at the University of Georgia, and they are now certified county commissioners. That's a lot of schooling, takes a long time to get it done, at least two years. But both of these people have completed their course in that, and I just think it's worth being recognized for the time that they've had to spend to do to be certified county commissioner. Congratulations to both of you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. I'm sure you read the minutes, is there a motion for these minutes to be approved as printed?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Now, a motion is asked second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Item five, the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item six on the departmental reports, six A is the Office of Emergency Services Director Broom.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, y'all have my written reports. If you have any questions on those, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is there any questions for Director Broom on the Office of Emergency Services? If not, I did notice we had around 124 ambulance calls last month. I didn't look, I don't remember the fire, and I think you told me a while ago, if you had to leave, we had...
They're on number seven right now.
On number seven, seven ambulance calls, they normally run about three and a half a day. So you said if you had to leave, that's where you were going, and we'll understand that. Any questions? Thank you. Six B is Recreation Department Director Glaze.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, you have my written reports.
Any questions, Director Glaze? If not?
Thank you for the schedule.
It looks like you got a lot going on out there, that's good. Six C is Finance Director Dawes.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have my printed reports, I do not have anything else to add unless there are questions.
Any questions, Director Dawes? If not, you got all that, all them pages. Okay, the next one is six D, Public Works Director Seymour.
Chairman, Members of the Board, you have all of my written reports on Public Works. Do not have anything to add to those unless you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Any questions, Director Seymour on Public Works? Okay, we'll move right along to Agenda Item Number Seven, is a public hearing. Is there a motion that we go into the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll say.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried, we allow a public hearing, Director Seymour.
Chairman, on August the 20th of 2022, the Planning Commercial Commission heard the following request. The applicant is Catherine Kirby, located at 1718 Graball Road, map six, parcel zero twenty-three, consisting of 9.86 acres, currently zoned A1 zoning. She's asked for a special use request to apply for a horse and dog rescue. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was approval, and that vote was unanimous, Chairman.
Is Miss Kirby all representative here?
She is not, Chairman.
I recommend we postpone it to next month. They got a zoning request, and they feel like they need it done, they ought to at least show up for the meeting. Stop objection, so ordered. Put it back on the agenda for next month, if you don't show up next month, we have it denied.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number seven, I got to come out of it. Is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
I'll so move.
That's second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner. Clyde made the motion, Commissioner Collins, second the motion, any discussion to come out of our public hearing? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Director Dawes, you need to really explain to these people, when they're at your meeting, that the real vote's taken over here, and if they don't have, if they don't feel strong enough about it, I don't feel strong enough about it for them. Okay, sales ratios, Chief Appraiser Kitty Adah.
All right, I think y'all have a copy of these two reports from the audit department. Cooper, you might understand them better.
Because, Adah, I don't, I don't know what's going on, but I can't hear. We spent $4,000 on P.A. system, and I don't, can y'all hear? I can't hear. Nobody in here can hear? I, I have, I, I, I'm gonna go back and listen to the video to hear what the preacher said, because I couldn't hear him, I can't hear you. Is there any way to turn this thing up? Well, I can't help what you can hear, you got the earphone on, I can't hear. There's, there's no audio to it at all to me, is it, y'all?
It's low.
I can't hear anyone, but everybody else can hear, I know it's a problem. All right, come on, give me some earphone.
Can you hear that any better?
That's a little better.
I turned the volume up back there, but Johnny, can you, can you, can it...
Okay, go ahead and proceed then, I can hear a little better with that.
And I'm a little tall, so I squatted a little bit, so maybe I'll be closer to it.
It ain't real good to me, but go ahead, I know what you're saying anyway, so go ahead.
All right, y'all, you all have the copy of the two reports, and obviously, Commissioner, quite may understand some of it, but it seems my chairman went on to the tax law years ago, and hired me here, 22 years ago this month. But I'll explain, just try to explain it, just so you understand what a sales ratio study is. It is done each year by the Department of Audits and Accounts and the Sales Ratio Division. They take a look at sales in our county and compare them against our assessed value to come up with a ratio study to see how close to fair market value we are appraising properties and how we equitable. We feel this study, I do for sure, and as many counties in the state, they are doing something different this year, we don't know what they're doing different. We do an in-house study for, this is for the '21 digest, that is about a year behind, it always is. We get to the previous one for the previous year about this time. Well, our in-house studies go where we lose, about 38.5% of, of the market value, where, you know, 40 would be your present at 100% value. 38.5, you're about 95% of the value. Historically through the years, we've been around 38.5 to 39%, and they come in at 36.23, it kind of shocked me, you know? Then I got to looking at other counties, and boy, I took a deep breath, thank goodness. Plenty of, 55 other counties were lower, and they're below the 30... Let me explain this, the 36% to 44% is in compliance with departmental revenue each year when they do this study. We're just above the 36. But the, the problem lies with this, how it would affect the county, any tax authority. The state of Georgia, Department of Revenue, they appraise all the public utility properties in the state. You talk about Georgia Power, Lifted, phone electric, our county, Georgia transmission lines, et cetera, rail electric. The public utilities through the year, they come to agree with departmental revenue that if a given county is at 38% or better, higher on their sales, most current sales ratio study, they will pay on debt, debt up 40%. So we have an issue, for this tax digest for this year, we have an issue assessment notice of public utilities because the state doesn't send it to us. The only charge the board of taxes just has in doing that is what level of assessment of their fair market value to do. If this sticks at 36.23, that's where the public utilities, we'd send them at 36.23% of their fair market value instead of 40. Now, what that equates to, I feel like it's gonna lose dollar amount, tax revenue that is rightfully due to the county and the school based on this, because I don't think this study's right, but we don't even know how they did it yet. Ain't got to the bottom of it, what did they use and how? They, they, they don't have any thing in law that tells them exactly, they can use sales from whatever. So we want to get to the bottom of it. But it would cost, the tax dollars it would cost, or the county would lose in revenue is probably a little better than $10,000, tax revenue. The school around $18,000, that they're rightfully due, based on what we feel like we're in compliance with the ratio study. We want to get to the bottom of it, and figure out, what did you do? What hybrid did you do this, so we can understand maybe where it's wrong?
Commissioner Tankersley?
Do you recall what the ratio was for 2020?
Our overall, around 38.5%, 38.8, could have been, for the last three years, it's been 38 something, and then before that, for the...
Sounds like maybe they started using some new software, it's got bugs.
I, I can tell you, they've done something to start with through the years, a few years ago, they changed. For that tax digest in '21, we required by law to use sales up to January the first of '21. Everything, everything sold in '20. Well, they're using sales to judge by when it sold from January to September of the current year. Like, we're supposed to have a Christmas ball, so, and they adjust them for time or something. We don't really understand how they did it, but we, you know, we feel like we did our job. We want to get to the, to the bottom of it, of how they did it. And the only way to do that is for either you all or the school board to peel it up. That part, I don't understand at all.
You're saying the other counties are pretty much in the same shape as we're in?
Oh, yes, there's, there's some, there's some really upset counties in the Sessions Office around this state this time.
We need a feeling.
Commissioner Clyde?
He, he answered my question about the appeal, what we had to do to appeal it.
Okay, Mr. Dad, did you, did you say that it was, how many counties did you say was in the same shape out of 150, 55?
There are 55 counties that were in compliance last year, I looked at that in the second report, I think it was 55 that were in compliance above the 30, that now are below the 36. Some is low as 33 and 32. Matter of fact, we have an association called the Georgia, G double A O, which is the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials. They have a new president, I think, every two years. The current president is in the county up north, and is a joining candidate, the incoming president for this coming year, with both of them were in compliance 38, 39 something. They're 33 and something, so, you know, we, we all understand it, we want to get to the bottom of it. We don't get left out if, if something gets changed, if we did the appeal to... I feel like if something gets changed with the way it's done, it's gonna affect statewide or everybody that appealed. We just don't miss that opportunity.
Need a motion for that?
I need, finally, I've got more questions.
Is, is this a report, did we get the same report last year? I don't remember seeing one of them. Yes, well, Chairman Norman, I know that, it wasn't an issue, it wasn't an issue, you know?
Two minutes.
Yeah, we, we have set up that show every year, but it wasn't out of whack last year. This year, it was out of whack, pretty much, I wanted to throw it in.
Since I came here in 2000, the year 2000, it got it straightened out to, it's not been out of whack. But it was when I, 2001, last year, it was 23 something.
Any other questions, Mr. Adah?
All right, one more.
Commissioner Henderson?
Is it possible that the, the way, well, I guess, real estate in general just went stupid in '21? Could that have affected this?
Well, it, it, it could, it obviously could, but if you remember what we're talking about, if the digests last year were probably went up 28 to, to 50% or higher, you know, based on what they were settled for. So this is telling up where you didn't go up high enough, I don't believe it, I don't believe it.
Any other question? Mr. Adah, if we vote to appeal this ratio study, that won't have anything to do with our digestion, being late to a seat.
No, 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 not at all.
Okay. All right, we've heard it, let me ask you another question, just for the public. The tax assessors are really, doesn't come under the county commissioners for a reason. That's the reason the law provides it that way, other than we appoint five board members over there. Why is it coming to us for an appeal versus the board of tax assessors?
That's what I've said for years, I don't understand, it's part of it, I mean, you have nothing to do with it.
But is that the law that requires that the government authority has to appeal?
It says it on that, on that, that cover sheet, that ratio, the county government authority, or the board of adjudication, they appeal these ratio studies, and why them? I mean, they had nothing, y'all had nothing to do with it, but that's the law.
I knew that, and I read that, but, but I was saying that where we can get it on here where everybody else understands the fact that, that the county commissioners are the only ones, the government authority of all counties, the only ones that can file the appeal on behalf of the board of tax assessment. So that's the reason you come in to request that we file the appeal, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that not true?
That is correct, and we would handle it from me and the board of assessors from that point.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Clyde?
Does the Board of Education have to do the same thing again?
No, no, this needs to be, it'd be one of the two, this worked out, and we got 30 days from the date of his mail last week, so, you know, I knew we had this meeting coming up, so it's just as easy coming to you guys.
We want to do it, about 30 days run out before we met again. All right, we, we've asked some questions, so is there a motion that we appeal the sales ratio study from the Department of Audits and Equalizations to the adjusted school property tax digest also?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the motion is asked second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion? Think we've had it. Being done, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, the motion is carried. Mr. Dad, is there anything that we got to do, we have to send a letter, or we have to do something? You would, share it up. Get with, get with us in the morning, and we'll get that done. Okay, the next item is number nine, the FY '23 CSRA RC Recreational Grant Director Blunt. Director Blunt, as you see, is not here. We looked this, we discussed this last week, and I guess, Madam Clerk, do you have anything to say about this?
No, sir, this is the same recreational grant that she's been getting the last several years, and it's...
This is the $5,000 recreational grant through the Department of Aging Services that comes through the Central Savannah River Regional Commission.
Yes, sir.
And, and we are voting to accept the grant of $5,000?
That's correct.
All right, is there a motion, we accept the grant from, on behalf of the Department of Legion Services from the Central Savannah River Regional Commission?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number 10, Lighting and Recreation Department Director Glaze.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, as of now, they're still researching, they say they know, it seems like they're not doing anything, but they still don't have anything on paper for us. We can go off this, this $5,000 per pole.
Who are we trying to get bids from?
H and H. We haven't found, found anyone else that do the lighting.
Say that again.
We haven't found anyone else to do the lighting, we was waiting on H and H with their bid. I mean, just to put it on paper, he told us $5,000 per pole, so...
Did they tell you why, did they tell you why they can't give us a price?
Still researching what all they gonna have to do. They said it's gonna be more than just going up and redoing the lights with, I guess, cutting the pole down some. They said they are looking, so don't think they're not, no, it seems like it's taking forever.
Boy, I tell you, people are independent this day in time, huh? Okay, any questions? Thank you. Agenda item 11 is Technical Support Agreement Director Walton.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this agreement is reparished technology for the technical support on a block of time basis, that's a change for the county. I believe this will better focus our outside IT services on what the county needs today, and I believe this will reduce our expenses over time by as much as half each year, and I ask your approval for this agreement.
Okay, this is, this is the block of hours?
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at 32 hours for $5,000, is that correct with, with Parrish Technologies, the name of the company?
Yes, sir.
All right, so this motion is that we, that we purchased the 32 hours for $5,000?
This is to approve the agreement, and the first block will be $5,000, $5,000, 32 hours, and we're not happy to be stopped there.
Okay, and then it, it can go up to as much as 15,000, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's much each year, yes, sir.
All right, we discussed this, I think we understand it. Is there a motion that we approve the agreement with Parrish Technologies for the hours and the amount in the agreement?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number 12, Security Camera Clothes Director Walton.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, these clothes are for the security cameras to monitor the gym, the courthouse, the Sessions Office, the fireworks office, and most importantly, the law enforcement center. This will replace all those old cameras that's in the jail. These will significantly improve the security for the inmates and for the staff, and that's very important. Cameras have a five-year warranty. The county has received approval for a $50,000 grant to help refer this cost. These quotes do not include the jail conduit and blood work we need. We're getting close on those quotes. I do ask your approval for the camera quotes, as we proceed. No additional work is needed at the gyms, get those installed, we want to move ahead.
What's that total amount, 175?
Around there, yes, sir.
175 is, is the total cost, and we got a $50,000 grant?
Yes, sir.
We've approved the grant part of this already, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're looking at, at spending up to $175,000 on these cameras for all these campuses?
Yes, sir.
So, so, so really, what we're looking at is about approximately coming out of the general fund, which we budgeted for last year, but it's 125,000, is that correct? Chair, you got all this?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're looking at the 175,000, $50,000 grant, leaves about, approximately the 125,000 that we do for the, for the camera. Who is this with?
This is for Adapt to Solve, using state contract, they've done several jails in the past.
It's, it's what, say it again?
Adapt to Solve, it's the name of the company.
Adapt to Solve, and that's through the state contract, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, is there a motion, do we accept the recommendation, Director Walton?
So moved.
And I see Adapt to Solve here and there, is that, got a motion, is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor, oh, Commissioner Henderson?
Where do we say this, this is coming from, is it SLOST or...
Director Dawes, that's a question for you.
Commissioner, it will be coming out of the, the general fund, and we'll be using ARP replacement funds for that.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Item 13 is the ACCG 2022 Voting Delegate Clerk McCullough.
Yes, sir. The Legislative Leadership Conference is coming up in October, and they are asking us to, or September, they're asking us to appoint a voting delegate for that, and we'll need to come in by August the 26th, so I need...
Did a commissioner volunteer?
Oh, I think the chairman volunteered.
Okay, put me down.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion that I be or... Is there a motion that I be appointed as voting delegate for the ACCD policy meeting? So moved, Mr. Chairman. That's second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde, in the discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number fourteen is the amend the FY twenty-three Department of Family and Children's Services budget, Director Dos.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, I am asking you to amend the FY twenty-three budget for, uh, the Department of Family and Children's Services to increase the budget by three thousand, uh, seven hundred dollars. Um, when, um, I did the budget, I did not realize that we had previously in, in the past, over the last five, six years, allocated up to seventy-four hundred dollars for their use. They have not always used that, but that's been an agreement that we've had. Uh, we will, uh, balance the budget by taking the difference from the general fund contingency, so I'm asking you to approve that budget amendment.
Okay, we have a request to approve the budget mountain amount of three thousand seventy dollars?
Seven hundred dollars, yes, sir.
To the current budget that is previously been of seven thousand four hundred dollars, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, in the discussion on the motion.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Tankson.
Ms. Dos, on this right here, this is just a cap level, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's, it's just a cap.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number fifteen is poultry and swine ordinance, second reading, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, you have before you a ordinance that was before you last month for the first reading. Uh, it has been posted on the county website, um, since last month. Um, I have not received, um, any calls whatsoever concerning, uh, this ordinance, for or against. Um, but also I want to remind that, um, if, if this board so chooses to adopt this ordinance, there'll need to be three separate votes. Um, you would need to adopt the ordinance as one vote, the second vote would be to adopt the overlay map, which is also posted on the website, and I think all of y'all have seen that map, they have copies of it. Uh, and then the third vote would be to repeal, um, the resolution that was put into place two months ago, uh, for the moratorium on, um, chicken houses. So, there would be three separate, uh, votes in order to do that, uh, if this board so chooses to adopt this ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, you want to start the reading of it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County hereby find that while large-scale livestock operations are of vital importance to the community and local economy, such operations, and particularly concentrated animal feeding operations, have the potential to have substantial negative impacts on the quality of life in residential districts, and whereas the Board of Commissioners find that the growth trends in Lincoln County support reserving certain areas of the county, residential growth and development, while allowing concentrated animal feeding operations in other more agricultural areas of the county, therefore being ordained by the Board of Commissioners as follows. Section one, concentrated animal feeding operations...
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to spend the reading.
Yes, sir.
Any objections spinning the second reading of this? If not, is there a motion that we adopt the ordinance as presented and as posted on poultry houses, concentrated feeding operation? Their motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, in the discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Collins.
All right, on page one, uh, paragraph B, number eight, I want to make sure I understand that no commercial property, house or structure for the keeping of livestock for commercial purposes shall be conducted closer than, how many feet?
Three hundred.
Two or three hundred?
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
So, it's three hundred.
Correct, Director Seymour?
Yes, sir, three hundred.
Okay, look at that range. Any other question?
Uh, if I understand this correctly, Mr. Chairman, I can have forty-nine swine or four hundred and ninety-nine poultry birds put out of problem.
That is correct.
If that is your understanding, Commissioner, you can have, I mean, up that amount of chickens...
I got a long way to go.
And, and that being... Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We have the overlay map that you're familiar with. I think we've had a couple of them drawn, and we decided on the one that's been posted, is there a motion that we adopt the overlay map that goes along with this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
You all might slow. Got a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, in the discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clyde.
It's, on the map, it's the light area, isn't it? It's permissible to have these shaded areas?
The shaded area is not permissible, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Any other question? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. I need a motion to rescind the resolution on the moratorium for poultry houses, is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is that second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankson, second by Commissioner Clyde, in the discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. Item sixteen, RV ordinance, the second reading of this ordinance, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, likewise, this ordinance, um, came to you last month for the first reading. Um, it has also been posted on the county's website, um, uh, for the last thirty days or, or actually a little longer, I think it went on after our public, um, after our work session last month, uh, went on that next day. Uh, we did make, uh, a couple of minor changes, which were also changed on the website, and that was the, um, setbacks, uh, which was section thirty-four six oh eight. Uh, we changed the, um, minimum setback, uh, from twenty foot to ten foot from the front and rear, and we changed the eight foot setback from side to side to six feet. That's on page two, section, uh, I'm sorry, page three, section thirty-four six oh eight. And then on the, um, fourth page, under section thirty-four six oh nine, uh, the accessory structure of no more than two hundred feet was changed to three thousand square feet. Um, and those were the only changes made from the, uh, initial reading, Chairman. And as I said, they, those changes were also made, uh, on the website, and the version that's on the website currently today is the version, uh, with the changes. And I have not received any calls for or against this ordinance either, as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, if you would start the reading.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Article eighteen A, fee simple recreational vehicle communities, section thirty-four dash six hundred, purpose, fee simple recreational vehicle community means any campground or other development where fee simple individual parking spaces for recreational vehicles may be bought and sold. The requirements of this article shall apply to fee simple recreational vehicle communities. Fee simple recreational vehicle parks may only be established where permitted by right or with special use permit approval. An application for development approval of a fee simple recreational vehicle community shall show compliance with the requirements of this article. Section thirty-four dash six zero one, permitting process...
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to suspend the reading of this order. There being no objection, we suspend it. Is there a motion that we adopt the RV ordinance as presented and posted?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That's second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, in the discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number seventeen is the flashing stop signs. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, if y'all recall, um, about a year ago, uh, at Clive's crossing intersection where we were having some, um, some wrecks down there, um, the county petitioned the state, uh, to allow us to put up some LED flashing stop signs at that intersection from each end of two twenty coming out through Augusta Highway. Uh, those have been installed, they've been up for quite some time, uh, seem to be very effective. Um, so, um, the chairman has asked me to look at a couple of other intersections, um, and with, in doing so, that is, um, Greenwood Church Road and Thompson Highway, or Amity, where those two roads come into Thompson Highway. Uh, the second is, uh, Prater Road and seventy-nine, uh, or, um, Bethany Church comes in on the other side of that intersection. Uh, and then the, uh, third intersection would be, uh, Maxim Road, two twenty, and Double Branches, uh, right there at Tankersville Store. Uh, so, I have put together a quote, got a quote for the stop signs, um, and we're looking at eighteen thousand, twenty-one dollars even, uh, for the stop signs, that's also including the mountain kits. Uh, the last time, I think, we asked Corum County to come down and show us how to install the ones that were installed at Clive's, they did that. Uh, my crew feels confident we can install those, we don't need that help. Uh, we will have to petition the state, um, on, uh, I believe, the intersection of two twenty, uh, and Double Branches Road, to be able to put them on, on that right away. Um, but with your permission and approval of the, um, quote for the eighteen thousand dollars, we'll start working toward, uh, those three intersections, get them put up as soon as we can.
Okay, is there a motion that we purchase these flashing stop signs for the amount of eighteen thousand twenty-one dollars to be paid from, from the teesplash farm?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, in the discussion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item eighteen is adjourned, is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconds?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankson, second by Commissioner Clyde, in the discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, we stand adjourned.